Go on and call us to order. First thing on our agenda even before that, I'm just gonna say Happy New Year to everybody. But before we go on and get started, Commissioner Altizer is gonna open us up during prayer.
Please bow. Dear Lord, thank you so very much for all of our blessings. Thank you, Lord, for getting our city of Hendersonville through the tornado that hit. Lord bless our allies in Israel and help protect them and guide them. All this we pray in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Caitlin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Hardwick?
Here.
Hasty?
Here.
Longmire?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Silkwood?
Here.
Slattery is absent. Coker?
Has that's eight here and one absent?
Eight here, sorry.
Next on our agenda items is an acceptance of the agenda. This time I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented. All right, I would got, it looks like a motion from Commissioner Hasty and a second from Commissioner Silkwood. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Next up on our agenda item is public hearings. We had, I believe, two scheduled as, yeah. We had two sched- yeah, we had two scheduled. First one is a request from, by Glen Oak Investment LLC to amend- Three, okay, three. First one was a request by Glen Oak Investment LLC to amend the Glen Oak Commons Final Development Plan to add recreational training schools to the list of permitted uses. The property is located at 102 Glen Oak Boulevard, on the south side of Glen Oak Boulevard, and on the west side of Old Shackle Island Road, as identified by Sundar County Tax Map. We did not have anybody sign up for this public hearing. Was there anybody intended to speak on this that did not get the opportunity to sign up? Seeing none, I'm gonna declare that first public hearing closed and move on to the second one. The second one is a request by Greg Tidwell to rezone 32.37 acres from office plan development, suburban living, medium density, to office plan development and suburban residential, low density, and to approve a preliminary development plan called TBN Music City. The property is located off Southeast Main Street, as identified by Sundar County Tax Map parcel. And I'll let you all read those numbers, I'm not going to. Nobody signed up for this public hearing either? Was there anybody that intended to speak on this at public hearing that did not get the opportunity to sign up? Yep.
Do you mean somebody from this development or neighbors who have questions?
Neighbors. This would be somebody from the community, anybody that want to speak on it. The developer will have an opportunity as the presentation comes along on that to speak. But this would just be for the community, somebody from the community that would want to speak.
Just as, as neighbors, do you have concerns about impacting your neighborhood?
Okay, you're welcome to come to the podium then if you would, you're welcome to speak on that.
I'm due to this.
Yeah. Not to put you on the spot, but we're gonna get your name and address, please.
That's okay. My name is Kathy Weldzius. You said address?
Yes, ma'am.
102 Reva Ridge in Hendersonville. And I guess I assumed-
Did you say Reva Ridge, ma'am?
Reva Ridge, yes. I assumed we would hear a bit more about it. I don't want to just come in here being opposed when I don't know the details yet. But it's hard to really be opposed or in favor when, when we don't know a lot. We're mostly concerned, my husband and I, about increased traffic with it being assisted living facility, perhaps sounds of ambulances in the middle of the night. We're worried about the walkability that's currently important to us along Codell Drive. We don't know if that's going to be expanded. It's a pretty narrow little road. I can't imagine that it's going to stay the same with this development in there. I know I'm personally very concerned about the, the Twitty City being torn down. You know Hendersonville has a, a long, rich heritage of country music. And Twitty City i- is an important part of that to us. In our neighborhood, we would always show visitors that area. You know, I didn't live here back then when Twitty City was still active, but I've gotten to know what it was about. And, and I hate for that to be a thing of the past. You know, I know progress happens, change happens, but I'm not sure that this is a, a welcome addition based on the neighbors that I've talked to. So, we just wanted to be here and, and express our concern for whatever, whatever our concern carries.
Thank you. Ma'am, could you spell your name, please?
Kathy, K.A.T.H.Y. Weldzius. Just the usual spelling of Weldzius.
Yep. Thank you. Was there anybody else that intended to speak on this public hearing that did not get the opportunity to sign up? Seeing none, I'm gonna declare the second public hearing closed and move on to the third one. Third one is a request by Bob Cushman to rezone 1.85 acres from industrial to general commercial. This request also includes an amendment to the general framework map of the Hendersonville Land Use and Transportation Plan to change the character area designation of the property from Westlake Industrial Flex to Westlake Community Retail. This property is located at 110 Taylor Industrial Drive, on the north side of West Main Street, and the west side of Maple Street is identified on Sundar County Tax Map. Any, we did not get anybody to sign up on this one either? Is there anybody that intended to sign up for this public hearing that did not get the opportunity to do so? Seeing none, I'm gonna declare this public hearing closed and we will continue on our agenda then. Next item on- Next item on our agenda is just citizens' comments. Nobody's, relating to agenda items, nobody signed up for that. So we'll move on to our minutes from our December 5th meeting. Assume all planning commissioners had the opportunity to review those. Is there any questions, comments, changes that need to be made from our December 5th minutes? Assuming not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as present- as presented. We have a motion from Commissioner Altizer to accept our December 5th meetings as presented. Can I get a second on that, please? We have a second from Commissioner Hasty. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item up is our consent agenda. There, it looks like there's one item on the consent agenda. I'll let the planning director just briefly talk about this and then we'll take a vote on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Belford Landing, Phase 1. This is the final plat for Phase 1 of that subdivision. It's just in the, the lots that are in the first of that. Everything is in order. The applicant has agreed to all staff comments and everything is ready to move forward with approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Can I get a second on that, please? We have a second from Commissioner Altizer. Go to roll call vote on this one. Just clear it all away. If it's aye, push a little button right here.
I did that, but that didn't go away.
I don't know, right here. There you go.
Sure, thanks.
I believe that everybody is locked in and recorded on that. Of course, we have Commissioner Slattery, who is absent. We have eight in favor and zero abstention. Caitlin, be able to have that recorded. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll just, if I can just note it. We'll just note that the, the current slide that everyone is looking at says Glen Oaks Common Retail, FDP ad use, that's incorrect. This is for the consent agenda item for Belford Landing, Phase 1 final plat. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on for that one. Then we'll move on to Glen Oaks Common Retail on that. So, this is Agenda Item 8. And it looks like Sydney, this is yours. I'll let you get kicked off. And do we have a representative from the developer here on that as well? We'll let Sydney go first and we'll let you have the opportunity to introduce yourself and speak.
All right, yes. So this is the Glen Oaks Common Shopping Area that's off of New Shackle Island Road. The applicant is requesting to add a recreational training school to the list of permitted uses for that planned development area. It is a general commercial base zone with that planned development. And it was approved in 1997 with a limited uses with general retail trade, personal services, professional services, medical and non-medical, and food service. And later amended to add a couple other uses, including personal, general personal services and financial consulting and convenience retail, except a gas station. So they are asking to add this recreational training school to the building on the right, on Parcel 1, that says the retail area. And then to the left, oh, you can go, oh, there you go. Okay, that works even better. And the, the boxes in yellow are the areas that they're requesting to add this recreational training school area to.
Hey, guys, I'm Drew Owens. I'm at Southeastern Builders. Yes, we currently own 102 and 104. We had made a mistake initially and ended up leasing a space to a karate studio, Hiroko Kempo Karate, in that space. Come to find out that it wasn't allowed under the uses of the PUD. So we would like to have it amended to allow them to keep operating.
Opening up questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hasty?
Is your tenant still occupying the space and using it?
Yes. When it came to our attention, we had spoken to Caitlin and Sydney and they were gonna allow them to utilize that space. They've only been in there about six months until we got this sorted out.
And I don't know about, I'll just give my opinion. Sometimes that gets me in trouble. Yeah, I think it's, you know, that whole complex, since the grocery store has left that area, I think it, it needs whatever it can to kind of boost the area. I mean, I don't have a problem with that use in that area. And I don't know that we have the authority to vote to allow them to stay until the process is complete or not. But I don't have a problem with allowing them to continue to utilize the place unless at some point when it's denied, then of course, obviously, they gotta go. But for now, I wouldn't have a problem with letting them continue to use it. And, and I will vote in favor of it.
I might mention that the Planning Commission has the authority to make a determination on an ad use. It does not have to be kicked up to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen unless the Planning Commission feels like it needs to. So the determination can be made this evening if you choose.
Any other, Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to agree with Commissioner Hasty. I think anything we can do to, to drive more investment and interest in that specific shopping, shopping area would be beneficial. So I don't see a problem with adding this use. I will support it as well.
Thank you. I just have one question before I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve with all staff comments. Looks like you're asking for this for, obviously, both sides there. Just out of curiosity, which, which building is the karate facility in?
It is in the large building in the bottom left corner. It is the far end unit there.
The one with 105 that, that's-
With the, it is the one with the church, least 102. It's the bottom left corner, end unit.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, why are you asking for the other building as well?
Well, because they have expressed their interest in expanding. As they've had a successful first run at this. So if a space does come available in the other space, they would like to stay within the complex.
Okay. I think that's fair enough. I was just kind of curious why you're asking for both. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we approve with all staff comments. I'm gonna let Commissioner Hasty have the second on that and then we'll move to a vote on that one. Caitlin, I think I kind of usurped your authority on that a little bit earlier on that. So I'll let you kind of take over on doing the roll call or, or at least announcing this and when we do the roll call on it.
Eight yes, no abstentions, and no nays. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Oh, sorry. Planning Director had a question for you.
Yeah, just a quick, just a quick question. With the, with the church facility, it's in the larger part of it. What's the timing on that? Is that still projected to move forward with their plans?
Yes, it's projected to move forward. Right now, we're working with them. They're gonna have to add some lines, some gas and water lines in there. So we're figuring out the best way to go ahead and do that as well as resell the parking lot. So as far as timeframe, couldn't give you a hundred percent answer, but we're hopefully gonna have them in by end of next year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is preliminary development plan for TBN Music City. Believe we've got the applicant and some representatives for the applicant as well here. If y'all would step up to the podium. Let Timothy do his presentation and we'll have, have the opportunity for planning commissioners have the opportunity for you to speak and planning commissioners ask questions on that. Timothy, if you'll kind of go on and get us started here on this?
Okay. So this is an existing development that began in the late 70s, early 80s as Twitty City and morphed over the years into Music Village USA and then Trinity Music City and some other permutations and flavors in between those. The, the current zoning is office plan development. There are, there are two small lots that TBN also owns that are, that are zoned SR1. And they're proposing those remain SR1, but they'll be adding a planned development overlay to those to restrict the uses to what is shown on the plan so that they could not be developed as, say, single-family units. The proposed zoning will remain the same as office plan development with the addition of the planned development to this two SR1 lots. They are proposing to, there's, there's a whole slew of, of uses that are allowed in the development. It came about primarily through the original Seapod Tourist Ordinance. They're proposing to replace those, those current old uses which are shown on, shown on Sheet 3, on the left side of the dash line. They're gonna replace, all those will go away and be replaced with a new current list of uses that's shown on the right side of that dash line on, on Page 3. The principal changes as far as those uses is the addition of independent living, assisted living and nursing home. The independent living, they are proposing to provide 48 villas, which would be a total of 96 independent living units. And then in, in assisted living and memory care facility fronting on Main Street, they're proposing, proposing 80 units. And they're also proposing a couple of office buildings, which, which would be there at the, on other side of Music Village Boulevard, intersection with Main Street. And then the, the existing Huckabee Theater is proposed to remain and be expanded. We'll point out, in Staff Comments, Planning Staff Comments, 9 and 10, there are provided, Staff Comment 9 provides criteria listed by the zoning ordinance for, for consideration of a planned development. And then the other Staff Comment presents the findings of fact that should be included in a, a motion for approval or denial. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Timothy. Would you introduce yourself and-
Sure.
Anything that you'd like to add or?
Yes, hello. My name is Greg Tidwell. I'm with Smithy Studio Architects. We're architects, urban designers, and interior designers out of Nashville, Tennessee. We are the land planners and architects for the project, also the applicant on the zoning application. I have with me Frank Medea, who is my client, who is working with the owner of the property to develop the assisted living and the independent living, as well as the two office buildings up on Main Street. The idea here is, is that TBN has some surplus property to the rear of the Huckabee Theater. And also they have about a four-acre surface parking lot that is underutilized right now and is looking to seek this rezoning for development of some assisted living and independent living for revenue to help fund their mission. As well as, as you are probably well aware, as a few weeks ago, the tornado came right through this property after we had submitted this application. It damaged beyond occupancy, two of the buildings on the site that were currently being used for video and audio production and office. That's, we were working with the planning department here to amend this so that we were adding some office to replace that up on Main Street at Music Village Drive there so that the current users would not have to rebuild the existing building just to remove it for the planned development that you see here. The expansion of the Huckabee Theater and those production buildings would be in the one or two of the office buildings up on Main Street. The idea there is that it would be a television production studio, audio production, which would also have a mixed use of potential commercial per what's allowed in the office PD on the ground floor, potential restaurant facing Main Street. The idea of the plan itself is to create a very pedestrian-oriented neighborhood for seniors and that the independent living villas are all situated around green open spaces and trail networks that could be used for pedestrians, cyclists, and maybe even golf carts that could circumnavigate around within the site itself. Those would be secured enclaves of villas with gates to provide security for those independent living residents. The assisted living facility, which is the dark brown building you see up on Main Street there, that's intended to be a two-story building. It could possibly have a split-level third story to help make up some grade. It's within the height limit requirements for the office PD. So we're, we're not asking for any modifications for height or density there. The three brown buildings you see between the independent living building and the Huckabee Theater, that's intended to be an amenity quad or plaza for the residents here, both independent living and assisted living, which would include a clubhouse with amenity, possibly pool, a small chapel, and a amenity building where the residents could go and, it's kind of like a cafeteria or commissary where they could go and have meals. This is all managed living, both independent and assisted, so that if, even if you're an independent living here, you have the ability to take part in those amenities and have your meals at the commissary as well. Also, the purple building over on Codell, that's an existing barn. It was heavily dam- not heavily damaged, but had the roof ripped off in tornado. The plan all along has been to keep that barn as kind of a nod to what was there before, even Twitty City was there, and provide a recreational green to the south of that, to the corner of Codell and Affirmed. It kind of serves two purposes. It kind of provides a distance buffer from those existing residential neighborhoods to kind of distance our development from those streets. Even though those assist, excuse me, the independent living villas will be one-story buildings, they'll be very short in stature. It does provide that extra buffer. We also are planning a landscape buffer all down the side of our property on Codell, all around Affirmed, and back up along the property line with the Baptist Church as well. And that, that landscape buffer, we have some buffer plates that are part of the PD application that show what the planning schedule and what the, the details of that are.
I'll now open it up, questions, comments from commissioners?
Now, I would just point out, I believe the plan does show, as far as walkability, the plan does show addition of a sidewalk all the way down Codell-
Yes.
And, and down to Affirmed.
That's correct. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions and a few concerns. Obviously, I'm very pleased and, and excited about what TBN has brought to Hendersonville, in particular, the Huckabee Show. I think everybody here is happy that that has continued and growing stronger every year. And I know the commissioners have several questions, so I'll just keep it brief and ask a couple and let them ask some more. But I do have several, just to warn you. So I agree completely that the property is somewhat underutilized. You know, there's a lot of empty space, a lot of empty parking spaces, there's nothing there. One of my concerns is, you know, as someone in the audience mentioned earlier, you know, Hendersonville has a really rich tradition of music and we're, I feel like we're kind of losing touch with that a little bit to a certain extent. I read in the reports that you all intend to keep the portion of the brick wall that says "Hello, darlin," along Main Street. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. But another concern is I do believe you're intending to tear down the Twitty House. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. That is a major concern of mine, considering the tradition and the history that it brings to Hendersonville. Although it's really not accessible to the public right now, knowing that it's there is, is exciting and I think can draw potential, you know, visitors to our town. Is that something you might consider leaving and working around in the, in the design?
You want to speak to that, Frank? May I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, my name is Frank Medea and I'm the President of the Real Estate Division for TBN, which is nonprofit. First and foremost, we're the largest Christian ministry in the world and our mission hasn't changed and isn't gonna change. We're, we're very blessed to have Governor Huckabee continuing on with us long-term. And so, we're at a crossroads right now. And the crossroads really was none of our doing. It was a tornado that hit December 9th. We have 100 staff people, production editors, that are all displaced. Some are working from home. Some are trying to work in a building that's unsafe right now, to be honest with you. We're trying to get them out of there quickly. The whole building was twisted. The roof of the Huckabee Theater, by the grace of God, came up and came down. That whole roof is gonna be replaced. If it had collapsed in completely, that theater would be gone. The mansion roof came up and came down and was twisted. The mansion before that was in bad shape. Now it's in real bad shape. And it really doesn't fit in a use for what we can do with a studio or with staffing. And that's why the amenities were brought in. However, with the sensitivity, should you so favor us, we really want to keep our footprint here and we want to expand it. So let me speak to that first and foremost. If you see the brown building up in the right-hand corner, it's an L-shaped, and then there's a little purple inside of it. What we'd like to do is to, rather than find a reason to have to shift things out of here because we can't support it, we'd like to fast-track that as fast as we can to get a building and a permit going there so we could put our staff in there. It's about a 50,000 square foot building. It fits the code presently. And I think we grandfather with the studio also, Timothy. And that little purple thing you see is a state-of-the-art volume studio. Volume studios are typically, that one would be 100 by 100. And the whole studio, when you- you walk into it, is LED, state-of-the-art. So we could put you anywhere you want to be in the world, and if you're filming, you're there. And Atlanta's done this very successfully. We're doing one right now in cooperation with Texas and with California. I've been opting for that very hard within our group because I think that the Nashville area and Hendersonville area deserves that. On that studio, what we intended to do was to take the Twitty Bird, which is half-destroyed, and to recreate it on the front of that studio. We also wanted to do a lot of memorabilia, and in fact, one of the things that we committed, both in the neighborhood meeting and in some other meetings, was that if we can get the rights, which our legal department's working on with Twitty, then we want to do a whole memorabilia thing within that studio and within the area, and also in the community room area. So that we sort of bring it back, because there's really no identity there at all for Conway Twitty anymore, except for what you know, the wall, and then the little Twitty Bird, which you don't see because it's in the back of the admin building, which also got severely destroyed. So having said that, that if we're successful in bringing that volume studio here, it will put, put you on the map. It'll put us all on the map, and I think you will see that what's been strategically planned to, to satisfy your concerns of traffic, which we took it very seriously. That traffic comes in and out of East Main Street. It doesn't go into the, doesn't release into the neighborhood. And if you look on the neighborhood side down where Caldwell and around Affirmed is, there's already a release there, but, but the way that the land planners have done it, our traffic, all routes to the interior and then back out again, and of course, to the red light. I met with the pastor at Baptist Church, and we talked about what some of their needs are. And some of their needs are, are Sundays because they have overlapping services, and they need a place to park. And so what I committed to them was that the existing parking we have, we would make available for them on Sundays, and I would enter in a memorandum with that, a good faith memorandum, because we want to help and support that as best we can, and we want a, a long-term relationship, and we've actually asked them if they would help man our chapel that we're putting in. And then he said what they could do with that is to shuttle people from the parking lot to the church and back in between services so that we could relieve it. I want to talk a little bit about independent living. Independent living is a broad category. It can be any senior, and seniors anymore, used to be 55, now it's 62. I don't know what it is. I guess I'm one. I'm 72, so I guess I qualify. But this is a little bit different because we want to create a culture that they can participate in expansions of what's going to be happening in the auditorium. We want to have a little bit more community events in there. We want to have some community stuff up in the front. And, and the idea is that they never have to leave the community for a lot of things that they would want. And it's not just independent living. They can check the boxes if they want to have help with food. They can either go to the community area and, and enjoy dinners or whatever it is. They could be on a play-in, or they could have their laundry done, they could have cleaning services, and also mobile services. What you find out with this, as I think we presented to Tim, is that your traffic, this is about one of the least traffic things you can do. Typically, seniors especially, and by the way, I don't think you know this, but we ran a study, and the average age of people in these type of semi-assisted ILs is, is in the 80s right now, age 80s. So we're not talking people that leave and come back and forth during high-traffic times. Typically, it's, it's one car, period, per villa, so we're way under parking things. And of course, on the, on the top one, which is the dark brown, just to clarify that, that's both assisted living and memory care. What we found out is that a lot of times you have split couples. It happened in my own family, my mother and my father. My mother, who was a retired RN, was viable and strong until she was 90 years old. My father contracted Parkinson's when he was 70 and debilitated till he was 83. Mom did her best to take care of him until she couldn't anymore, and our hearts were broken because we couldn't put him in the same community. He needed memory care and help. She didn't need anything. She was IL, was maybe some support. So that's part of what's driven this, and, and in that sense, if there is such a problem, or, or I should say, a challenge or an opportunity, let's call it, you could have one family member in an IL and the other one in the assisted or the memory care, and they could meet together to eat together. They can meet together to do things together and, and still be in that same facility. Or it's, it's a place where if somebody becomes dysfunctional enough that they can't reside in the IL enough, then they can transition and stay in the same community with the same people. And what we've learned in, in healthcare as it's getting older is relationships are very important. So it's, it's enough to separate somebody from their home, which is a hard thing to do. It's another thing to put them in one residence and then take them out and stick them in another residence, where they don't know anybody, they don't know the healthcare people, they don't know the bell they ring. So part of that reason is to have that 80-unit memory care in assisted living, and it'll only be 22 memory care units, and the rest are assisted living, and hopefully it could serve that community well. And if you look at the buffer, that was really my insistence at first, and of course, the land planners had already dropped something, and we made it wider and wider, and then we took away some of the depth down below so that we weren't infringing on the Affirmed, Affirmed people, and we actually had a neighborhood meeting, and some of the residents were there, and, and they said they were supportive because of how we approached that, because we're very sensitive to that. We're very sensitive to not adding traffic onto Caldwell, but to keeping it internally and then externally going out. As, as Greg said, we only wanted one stories. We don't want something that's looking across from the neighborhoods and you see rooftops. They're one stories, they're, they're designed to be very, very attractive. They're homely and less density. Finally, you know, TBN has a history of trying to do things with excellence as unto the Lord, and only commitment we could give to the city is we're not going to change that. If you so trust us to partner with you, we're going to give it the best we have. And if you're, if you watch TBN anymore, we call it TBN 2.0. It's leading the world in changing the way Christian television is presented to be multi-generational, but also to be done with an excellence that rivals with Hollywood. We want to do that also here, and we want to be able to do it in a confined area that will bring excellence and be able to be an earmark for the Nashville community, which I think is very rich with talent and people and celebrities. There's no reason why this area shouldn't have one, and there's no reason why it shouldn't be at Hendersonville. So that's, that's what we have to say. We've been working on this for well over a year. We first met with staff, I think it was, wow, 14, 15 months ago, to get their feeling about what would work, what wouldn't work. We took it all to heart. We changed things, revised things, and then we, I also want to compliment your staff because the tornado hit December 9th, and I think I was bugging you guys December 11th and asking you, how could you help us to, to put a building up where we're already zoned to put that building up, because we want to keep our staff here, and we want to put the studio there. So that's it. If I could answer any more questions for you, I'm happy to.
Commissioner Silkwood, you're still lit up if you can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, you know, I'm asking difficult questions because I know that's what the citizens of Hendersonville are going to want us to ask when we talk about making changes to this complex. Would you be open to leaving the Twitty House?
If, if you see where the Twitty House is, it's smack in the middle of everything, and it has no use. It's dysfunctional. We tried. We looked at it. We tried to figure, can we make it amenity? There's nothing we can really do with it, and it's, I understand, you know, that, that there's some affection for the history of something, but it, it hasn't been viable or done anything for many years, and it's just there. I think if we go forward to try and bring forth a revival identity of what Twitty was there, I think that, I think that satisfies a lot, because right now you have no identity of Twitty there. You can't see the Twitty Bird. I mean, the, the brick wall's there, but most people don't even know what it is. It needs to be lit up. It needs to be, you know, some way with forever exaggerated a little bit. And then I think there should be some kind of memorabilia so that people get to history. I know I brought in some of our people. They had no idea who Conway Twitty was. They didn't know anything about it. I'm talking about an engineer who's been out of school three years, a designer. I think, I think that we have to be sort of multi-generational and look beyond and say, how are we going to preserve and do it? I, I don't see how we could make that work and have a viable plan, because we took a lot of density out. When we met with Timothy, he gave us ideas about Demuthi, and, and with Keith, density, and we, we heated that. So we reduced our site already. To reduce it more begins to, in my estimate, is economically not feasible, given everything else that we're trying to do with open space and that.
And I also heard you mention that the tornado has damaged the building.
It damaged every building that was there, and it damaged that building on our roof again. So we're at the position where, where we have to make hard decisions about repairing and restoring things. And unfortunately, and it's a public fact, we are, TBN was highly underinsured on that site. So now we're at a position, if we're going to start putting money into fixing old things, then the new things aren't coming. I'm not trying to be difficult, but I'm just telling you. So it doesn't make sense for us. Doesn't make sense to try to restore an old building that's not going to be seen and walk away from the new studio.
Okay. Thank you. Just to be clear, I am not against this. I'm just simply asking tough questions because
Sure.
I know that every single person who, when they find out that this is a possibility that Twitty House may be torn down, these are the questions they're going to want to ask.
Sure, I understand.
I will, I've had the floor long enough. A lot of other commissioners ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans.
Well, leave it to me. I've done several polls in Hendersonville, and by far, the overpowering, overwhelming complaint that everyone has is that we're overgrowing and overbuilding our infrastructure. That happens again and again and again and again. And in this particular situation, there's a lot of density there. I know, I know that it's assisted living, and I understand independent living, and I'll be 72 next week, by the way, so I, I get that, that it's admirable that you're doing that. First of all, I don't see the connection between the studios and the assisted living. I, I guess the overall mission may be what you're looking at there, but the biggest problem I have is Winston Hills, Bluegrass Commons, and then the myriad of entrances between those two traffic lights down East Main Street. I've looked at the traffic study and, and the grading system from A through F, there are a lot more Cs, Ds, Es, and Fs than there are As and Bs, meaning the intersections are, they're loaded, especially the one where you go down to Saundersville Road. Now, being 72 years old, I know that if I live there, I'm not going to pick those busy times of the day to get out on the road. I'm going to wait until I can go later, and I'm going to go to the traffic lights. I'm not going to try to turn left out of any of those roads in between the two traffic lights. Next thing that, that I'd like to point out, a few years ago, 10, 12 years ago, we were talking about putting a restaurant down on Sanders Ferry Road, down near the boat dock, and there was a lot of discussion about that. The project was eventually terminated, but one of the comments from the planning staff at the time, and I wasn't here at that point, he said, "The traffic count increase is insignificant." Well, insignificant a thousand times becomes very significant, and every time we add another project here, we add more traffic, and every time you add a very insignificant little bit of traffic. Look at 30 years ago, that's when I moved here, 32 years ago, and look at it today, and it's significantly different with all those little insignificant additions of traffic that we have. We looked at a project the other day near Burger King, and the thing that stood out to me again is left turns. All the left turns that come out of there. People in assisted living here, they're going to want to turn left when they do move out and go out. They're going to go back toward Hendersonville by and large. Well, they're either going to go to one of the two traffic lights, or they're going to come out and try to make a left turn out of there. We're also talking about a recommendation of two right-turn lanes that I believe somebody suggested that the city should do to get into this facility. Well, once this facility's built, we're talking about out parcels and subsidiary companies. We're talking about restaurants. We're talking about other commercial businesses that will certainly get traffic other than the people who live there. Then we're talking about golf carts. In my neighborhood, the golf carts aren't confined to the property that they came from. They're all over the streets. Once you put golf carts out there in the traffic that is going to be in that area, you've created another monster. And as much as I admire what you're trying to do and agree with the concept, I may need to be there one of these days, we've still got a traffic problem in Hendersonville. We continue to have a traffic problem, and we need to do something to make this look a little different in anticipation of our underpass over there. There's a, there's a way to look at this that, that would be compatible with, with that project if and when it gets going. Hopefully, it'll be a lot sooner than the Old Shackle Island project that's been ongoing for 35 years, and I hope, hope that happens. But I'm going to have to be a no vote in the condition, of the conditions as they are because of the traffic issue alone. Other issues I have concerns about, but those are really not issues that we can consider here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Just a little side note, actually, Old Shackle Island project's going, been going on longer than 35 years. You've just been here for 35 years, so. Other questions, comments from commissioners?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't think an actual question came out of that, but I'm happy to speak to it. My name is Philip Neal. I'm a civil engineer. I work with Kimley Horn and Associates, who's the civil engineering firm helping out on this project. That includes traffic analysis as well with the traffic engineer. So some of the public may or may not be aware that whenever you do a development like this, there are national standards and procedure that you go through to analyze what kind of impacts you're going to have on, on all different things, but traffic is one of them. And those standards include, you know, essentially, you're trying to compare the capacity of the existing context, what other developments are going on unrelated to your development, and what you're going to add to that, so the, the generation of trips that your development is going to add. And I think when you're familiar with what's there today, and you see this plan, it can be quite intimidating because it looks like a lot of buildings. But I think what may not be coming through is, many of these buildings are only two units, and those units are this independent living, folks that do not travel a lot. So what we do is we refer to a national standards book that tells you, based on regularly updated statistics, what, how many trips are generated from a particular use. And when we compare that to the, to the capacity of the roads, we can anticipate what kind of impact that development will have on network, and from that, make recommendations of improvements to that, to that network to increase or to make, to mitigate whatever impact we have. So in this case, the, the numbers that we come up with for trip generation, you know, that doesn't come from Frank or his group, that doesn't come from us, that comes from a nationally-recognized manual. And when we did that, while there are certain areas where there is some delay, really, the most of the delay, which I think the commissioner referenced, is really going to be within the development. So it's going to be the folks that are in the development that will experience the delay, whereas one thing this, this project really benefits from is a overcapacity, or sorry, overly-designed, underutilized boulevard through the project. So there's a four-lane Music Village Boulevard that goes through, that I think the only cars that are on it today are really the, the security for the grounds right now. But what Mr. Medea mentioned before is, really, we're always trying to look at the context of the existing roadway. You'll notice that there's no driveways to Affirmed. The only driveways that are on Codell, we're actually keeping the same number of driveways. One is only to be used for a few workers in loading, which it is to be used for a few workers in loading, which it is used today. We're not, we're not proposing to change that. The other, we're simply relocating to better align with the driveway that's behind the, the New Scooters Coffee that's coming in on that northeast corner of Codill. We recognize that Codill is a very sensitive road. It's very narrow. So we intentionally kept all of our traffic away from that road. We encourage it. Everyone's going to want to go to Music Village Boulevard and go straight to East Main or to Bluegrass Commons. And one of the best improvements you can bank to, to a development for traffic purposes usually is a signalized intersection. And we actually benefit from one already where Bluegrass Commons is coming in. Music Village Boulevard is not a great spot for it because of the, the distance that you have to be from other signalized intersections. And there's another one that's coming in with this proposed project for the, the tunnel underneath the railroad to redirect Sanders, Saundersville Road. So, all those things being considered, again, according to national standards, the, the intersections and roadways appear to perform at an acceptable level in both existing and proposed conditions.
Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You bring up a very good point. Music Village Boulevard is a private road, correct? And very much underutilized. I occasionally take that road. And that brings up a question. Is that going to remain open to the public?
It is. It's a private road technically, but it will function the same way it is today. Public can use it if they'd like.
Okay. And I'm assuming your residents and staff would be encouraged to come out at the signalized light right there at Bluegrass Commons?
Correct. I think if nothing else, just naturally, it's going to be easier to get out at a signal rather than a non-signalized intersection.
And then the Codill driveway, that's primarily for loading and not an entrance for your staff or perhaps for staff, but not so much residents? That was one of my original questions that I didn't get to ask.
Yeah, it, it looks like it's new on the plan, but really, that's exactly what it is today. It, it actually connects to less of the development in, in the proposed setting.
Okay. Thank you so much.
I'll, I'll mention the traffic study that I'm glad you brought up and is certainly available for anyone who'd like to review it. One thing it does not include is the right turn lane that the Scooters Coffee is going to be adding, which will certainly improve our numbers. It also does not include any of the impact that the exit eight re, redirection of Saundersville project, which would also improve our, our numbers. So, we really intentionally tried to take a conservative approach with our analysis.
If I might just, Mr. Chairman, just one moment, because it, it is a, it's a viable question, sir. And, and I honor that. And we, we considered a lot of that. Presently, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Whitten, but I think presently, this property is zoned office?
Correct.
And I, I already asked this question, but I'm going to ask him again. How's traffic compared to office compared to IL?
Significantly less.
So, we're actually reducing the possibility of what could happen on this site and committing to that. And that was part of what we did. We had considered a plan that had mixed office and some other issues in there. But number one, we're not office people. You know, we're, we're people, people. We serve people. And we serve the spirit. We serve the, serve the body and we serve the emotions. So that fits in our mission, as you so well pointed out. But I think it was to, to your understanding and, and understanding that you, you're a growth city and it's, it's happening all over the country. And I know it's not what you want to hear, but cities grow. And if we want our children to stay where they are, they grow, or else they leave. And, and in that instance, you know, it's how we all measure that and, and how, and we do, and by the way, I'm, I'm involved in five projects in different states. And so there's issues that are very similar as we're dealing with things. And what we found out is that this plan works very well. When you, when you blend the faith in with serving, especially elderly, and we have a trauma center that we're working on in downtown Manhattan right now, and those kinds of things, that we blend very well with that because it, it's our mission. It's our heart. It's what we do. So I would also, as you're considering this, understand that if we don't do this, the potential is somebody else could want to do offices here, which is going to be a lot more impact in which they are hardly right to do. It's not a change. So, I think, I think we've tried to set us that. And I understand, you know, if, if you don't want any growth at all in your, again, it, that's, there's nothing else I could say about that. But if you want measured growth, that's sensitive and understanding and a good partner for generations to come, then we're your people.
Commissioner Evans?
Yeah. I, I don't want to get into back and forth. And I do understand cities grow. That's why I'm here, because I believe in orderly growth.
Yes.
And I believe we should plan in the planning department for the kind of growth that we're going to have. Having said that, that's the source of my comments. I understand
Yes, sir.
the traffic study. I understand how those work. What I would like to see, and love your project, love it. But I would like to see a little more attention given to this traffic issue and this obviously about to be funded underpass that we've got going on and how maybe we could handle that a little bit better for all of us. I know if we put an amusement park there, we'd probably have a lot of traffic. I get that. We just went through this process with the Stop 30 Road Project about talking about the difference between commercial development and residential development. I'm trying to make a point here that, that we need to take care of our infrastructure as we take care of our growth.
Yes, sir.
That's my point.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Another point on the red light, the exit that, that comes off of, up, up through Music and goes off to the left. When I talked with the pastor, met with him, he told me he worked hard to get that signal there. And because they had a hard time when they were letting church out between and thousands of people coming in and going out. And he let me know that, you know, on a Sunday, traffic's going to be backed up to use that light. I can assure you this, we'll never have traffic backed up with an IL daily. It's not going to happen. You just don't have enough people at one time.
Other questions, comments from commissioners? I'm going to kind of take the liberty to kind of ask a few questions myself since nobody else is asking anything at this point. I want to focus a little bit on, no, obviously off sustained some damage. Tell me a little bit on the existing studio that has apparently been damaged beyond repair now. Tell me a little bit about where that currently sits on the property now from looking at, looking at this map.
I wish I had the other, another map, Mr. Chairman, but that's, we call that the Better Together Studio. And it's the one that has a dome on it. That's the exact replica of, oh, pardon?
Wish we had a laser pointer. It's the one that looks kind of like Monticello.
Yeah. And that's the one that was, is, it's damaged beyond repair. It actually twisted the whole building. So on down to the foundation to the top where it's twisted. And we've been trying to figure out what we could do with it. There's not a whole lot to happen with it.
The one with the red roof.
Yeah, the one with the red roof.
Okay.
And then the other one next to it is the recording studio, which by the way, is, is Trey and Paul Corley, who had Grammys and quite a bit of other stuff. And we've made it safe for them to stay where they're at right now, but we're going to have to temporarily relocate them. And we don't want to lose them in the area. So they're, if, if we're so approved, they'll be relocated into the new facility with, I think it's called Oak Tree Studios.
Okay. So, the studio that you're talking about building, it would be housed, it would have combined both of those to get, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
The studio that you're talking about building, it would be combining both of those facilities into one. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And to support the new studio.
Okay. So you're, you're doing more then than just mimicking the existing facilities. You're adding capacity, adding, would it be, would it be adding capacity or be something being, doing new things beyond what you all are doing right now there? Can you talk to me about that a little bit?
Yes, sir. Up off of East Main Street with the building that was in the corner that you saw, right now, the preliminary plan is for that to be about 50,000 square feet. The very front of that building would be facing the street. So we would, we would be able to come multi-story on that, a couple stories, that would give us the staffing that we need and then wrap around it to the left for our production and editorial. And then in the middle of that building where you see the other purple, that is all new studio. It's 100 by 100 feet, all new studio. That's the volume studio that's all state of the art. So that would be in addition to the Huckabee Theater. And in essence, what would be is a hybrid so that we could use the production and editorial staff that presently has been serving Huckabee and some of the documentaries and, and the Better Together program, which some of you may watch, is one of three studios we have. One's in Texas, one's in LA. And now, unfortunately, we've displaced that studio. It's had to go to Dallas because we, we don't have it here and we can't put it back in that building. It's destroyed. So there'll be another Better Together Studio up in the corner. And, and why that's important is because our, our, we have three, three pairs of hosts, four each of ladies. And the, the, those four, for Nashville, live here in the Nashville-Hendersonville area. So we, we just don't want to lose them and displace them. So we're trying to figure out how to quickly keep them here and do that. But that whole set got destroyed. It just got, it's gone.
You'll have to pardon my ignorance here. I'm just wrapping my
No, no, please.
my head around this because this is not my, it's not my wheelhouse. But is that something kind of like the Huckabee Show where you have an audience in there, you have a true center? Is this something where there's just a screen behind them? It's just cameras on there? Is it something where public comes in and watches this? Tell me a little bit about what goes on in that.
In a volume studio, it, it's, it's not a public attraction. A volume studio is, is, is more as for somebody who wants to come in or if we do it ourselves and be able to, to do a production right there. And for example, you want it to be the Grand Canyon. It's L, all LED and it's, it's amazing to see. And you're literally there. And then you could shift with a little bit of resetting and technology and have a whole different site. So instead of having to have big masses amount of space and people and that, it's all happening in one scenario. However, you bring up a good point because part of the plan for the actual culture of this site is to do more with the Huckabee Theater. At this point, the Huckabee Theater is set up just like it is for itself. And the governor usually comes in on Thursday. They, they get presets and then they record on Friday. And then, of course, the program shows on Saturdays and Sundays. And so the idea is, is that once we have that, we can have some more flexibility and be able to do more within the Huckabee Theater that can be community stuff. We had a, I've had a couple people reach me that were interested in telling me the difficulty they're having with dance studios for their, for children and for, and it, I guess there's a low, one that was 10 miles away or something. And just a lady called me three weeks ago and she said that they canceled their opportunity to be there this year. And I had, when I had met with a few of the people, I'd said, "We'd like to be able to help, help with that. So possibly in our community area, if not the Huckabee Theater, you know, we could be trying to open and serve the community so that when there is a dance recital with the kids coming, you have a place to come within the community unless somebody knows." What I don't know, I was told there is none. There's nowhere to do such a thing here in the community. So I think that would be something we'd like to try to serve.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate the background. It kind of explains to me what the volume studio is on that. I guess, helping me kind of getting this, again, kind of wrap my mind around stuff. If something's not going to be something, a public attraction that sort of, I guess my question is, why would you want to put it on such a prime location on this property? Because you got it up on the corner of Main Street and Codill then on that. It seems like that would be a prime location for whatever on that. I mean, it's very visible on that where it's something, if it's not public, you could, you might want to, it doesn't make a difference where it is, I guess what I'm saying on that. That might be something that you'd want, something more visible or
Well, I'm, I'm going to defer to, to Greg on that. But because of how the, the, the internal flow of the community is, I think we're trying to be very sensitive to two things. One, not to, to give a, a visual sight to the Codill residences, which if you pushed it back, they would. Where it's at now, you wouldn't. And to the affirmed residences. And secondly, not to have an interruption. We really can't blend pedestrian area with that studio. It, it wouldn't function very well. And I think that the way this is being intended, it fits perfectly in with the, with what you, you've been looking for on an office side of East Main Street, which is what it's presently zoned for, was, was office. That's why. But it, but it's, the front of it's going to be very attractive from what Greg tells me. He's, you know, he's got his architecture ready for that. And that was on the front of the, that studio that will be a little higher than that. That's where we wanted to put the Twitty Bird and sort of, you know, let it be understood it was, it was a Twitty community and then move from there.
Is there something you'd like to add?
Sure. The, the, one of the reasons Frank just nailed it is that studio building is a tall building. Because to build a volume studio, you're going high bay. We wanted to keep that height closer to Main Street than further back adjacent to the residential communities, just to keep the visibility at a commercial scale. The other thing is we wanted to wrap those two sides of that studio base, space. Basically, that's a, it's a blank box. You think of a Hollywood studio, they don't have big windows because you're trying to keep it dark. It's all LEDs on the inside. So the red liner on both sides is a two-story wrap so that from the street, it looks like a traditional Main Street mixed use building. You may have some storefronts on the ground floor, some punched windows above for offices. We can have some auxiliary commercial use per the office PD. So we plan to have possibly a restaurant on that ground floor on that corner. So from Main Street, it looks like a traditional commercial ground floor mixed use building.
Thank you. I want to shift gears a little bit. But I appreciate you asking questions on that. Because obviously, tornado a few weeks ago has kind of changed, changed complexion of things. Mr. Media, I want to, I've, you and I've had some conversations as well since it kind of came up. And I think I wrote you a very short epistle. As I say, that kind of tongue in cheek. If anybody's ever gotten an email from me, you know, sometimes I can be rather, rather verbose in a certain way. And I appreciate you taking the time to meet with me and let me share my thoughts with you on this. I, I probably took a longer way of kind of sharing some of the concerns that you've heard from tonight. I like some of the, I like a lot of the concept. I've got some of the concerns though, losing the Twitty Mansion from traffic. And just, is this being the highest and best use of the property? And I think we've got some potential here. I think what we, what concerns me though more immediately is a couple of things. And this is of no fault of anyone. I think the fact that this falls on January 2nd and this has not had a whole lot of time. This is a big project. This has not had a whole lot of time for public to digest. It's not had a whole lot of time, quite frankly, for planning commissioners to digest. We got, I think it was about 197 pages worth of stuff on this. And I don't know if you know the way it disseminates to us. It comes out via email. And that email goes out usually the Friday before our meeting. Well, it came out two Fridays before, which happened to be December 21st. And so we got this, that email came out before Christmas. Well, also from just, we're not supposed, we're supposed to check our email up here just for regulatory. I don't think anybody probably saw that email until today on that. So we have not had time to digest all of this. I know the public hasn't as well on that. So I would like to maybe, I would like for y'all to maybe possibly make, if y'all would be willing to maybe entertain deferring some of the rest of this, but let's talk about the studio tonight. Because I know that's of crucial concern on that. If there's any way to separate that out and maybe deal with the studio tonight, I'd like to kind of maybe throw this out to planning commission discussion on that because I know that's of crucial concern. Do y'all get in the studio up and running? I'd like to just kind of throw that up to discussion from planning commission and see what y'all's will is on that. So I'll open it up to y'all. And if you all have some feedback on that too, see kind of where the will is at. So questions, comments from commissioners. Commissioner Hardwick?
So I have a question. I'm sure I understood. You have the big studio you've been talking about at the top right with the purple on it. Then across Music Village Boulevard, you have another smaller footprint of a building. And then you have, I, what I'm assuming is the memory care?
And assisted living. Yes, memory care and assisted living building.
So what is the, the building between the studio and the memory, the, and I'm assuming the memory care assisted living, that bigger building will probably be two or three stories as well?
Yes.
But the building sandwiched between the two of them, what, what is that?
That is being held for an office or commercial building, primarily office building. It could be one story is what we're looking at for the parking lot right now.
But you're not planning on buil- You're not planning on building anything on it at this point? It's just being, that lot's being held for future development?
That's my understa-, that's correct. Yes.
Okay.
I did just want to point out one thing about that, that studio up there at the corner. So my understanding is that, that studio is in furtherance of what's already- So my understanding is that, that studio is in furtherance of what's already ongoing on the property as far as media production. It has been ongoing for, for many years. Under the current master plan, it's, it's an allowed use already. So you have updated the, this, this requested master plan to show that, but they could, if they wanted to, come forward with a site plan at that location because the master plan already shows a media facility at that corner.
Okay.
So they could, regardless of what happens tonight or later, they could come forward with a site plan for, for that specifically.
Okay. Director Free.
Yeah, and I, that, what Timothy shared is, is correct. They could do that now with that red, red and purple building on the top right. So they could do that now and just come through with the site plan. I might just mention, and Timothy did a great job in the staff report, but kind of explaining, this is a patchwork of planned developments across this property at different stages and at different, different years and the complexity of how confusing it was. He did a really good job, but this took a lot of time to even unfurl exactly what is allowed and isn't allowed. And as a part of this, that's one of the reasons that we incur, you know, the TBN was looking at doing it a couple of different ways. And one way was just maybe doing a conditional use permit on different parts of it, you know, and go through the BZA. But with, with, with how patchwork all of these different planned developments were, you know, we encourage them that submit a planned development that cleans all of this up and, and gives a clear vision of exactly, you know, what, what's going to go on for the entire site. And so I just kind of wanted to share that. I know it was in the staff report, but, but I just wanted to share that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Free. A question for you, Director, is based upon what you just said and what Timothy just said, if they can come with a site plan based just that right there, is there any action that, that we could take tonight? And it doesn't sound like there is, but any action we could take tonight that would just help them with that process if, but that, just that process itself just focused on that studio?
Uh, no. There would just be a site plan that would be by right. Of course, they'd have to meet all the different requirements and, and any, any transportation-related improvements that would be associated with that as well.
Okay.
But it would just be like a typical site plan is what they would, what they'd be required to do. So it would require no action at this point from the planning commission, but it's not, if, if they are going to pursue that, I think it's just, it was helpful to discuss it and at least just bring that up. And so that, that's all.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that feedback. We can take things one of two ways here and it's, I'll defer to y'all and I'll defer to the will of the planning commission. I think from the sense of the comments that you've heard here tonight, I think that there's some hesitation to go forward as is. I'd like to, you heard some comments, heard some feedback on that. We can press forward with a vote though, if you want to do that or if you want to take kind of the comments that y'all have heard and maybe bring it back to defer next month on that. That's, we'll, we can present it either way that y'all would want to on that. Director Free.
Well, we certainly want to be respectful of, of the concerns. Last week, I got a phone call from the chairman and he said, "Call me when you're out of the meeting and I'll make my decision if we're shifting to Dallas." I'm just being blunt. I don't know what to tell him. I don't know what to tell him. I just have to tell him what the results are of this meeting and then we'll get back to you with what the intentions are of TBN. I don't know what else to say. So I would suggest if you want to defer, that's, you know, we're going to respect that and defer. I don't know what or if we'll be coming back with something.
Okay. Well, that was, is there, is there a commissioner that would like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve it with all staff comments.
I'll second.
And we have second. And the findings of fact that we're in the package.
We have a commotion, a motion from Commissioner Hardwick and I believe there is a second from Commissioner Altiser.
Yes.
All right. We will then go to a roll call, vote electronically. I think we're going to have to do that again, folks. Stay. Yeah. Caitlin, will you read the results, please?
Sorry, I was recording. Four noes, four yeses. Motion fails.
Go ahead, Director Free.
Yeah, so what this does is with a four-four, then that's, that's a fail. And so that would move forward. This isn't the end of the line. It's a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman and it would move forward to next week's general committee for BOMA. And then they would, they would take action and then move it forward after that, after, two weeks after that would go before BOMA for a first reading and with a recommendation, negative recommendation of a tie vote from the, from the planning commission. And so that would be the process. And then the process is there'd be a first reading and if it passes first reading at BOMA in, in about three, wait a minute, in about fi-, four, about one week, in about three weeks, then about a month later, it would go for a second reading at BOMA and then that's when the final decision would be made unless it doesn't pass BOMA on the first reading. And so that's the, that's the, that's the process.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is item nine, rezoning for 110 Taylor Industrial Drive. And Sydney, I believe this is yours.
Yes, so this is a two-part rezoning vote. So you've got two items on your agenda because this also is an amendment to the recently approved Future Land Use and Transportation Plan that was approved in April for the Westlake area. Prior to that approval, this area was zoned suburban center and then that approval in April changed this to the Dockside District with the industrial flex, flex sub-district. The industrial flex sub-district allows medical offices, but not, but not personal services establishments and things like that. It was zoned that way or, well, not zoned that way. It was given that designation in that Westlake plan because that's sort of what the existing businesses represent. And I've included those, those uses there. There's a warehouse, there's some printing services, which is general business services and, and that type of thing. So the first request is for an amendment to that future land use plan to change it from the industrial flex to the community retail character area, which is in line with general commercial. And then the second part you'll vote on is the rezoning itself. So the rezoning, currently that property is not quite two acres, it's like 1.5 acres. And the back portion that the building sits on is industrial and the front portion of that lot is general commercial, which is currently just a parking lot. And so they, the applicants have had a little bit of, they want to open up their opportunities for their tenants. The building was about eight foot, had about eight-foot ceilings and they were having a difficult time finding warehouse users for that building with the low ceilings there. So they were requesting more of a general commercial zoning so that they could appeal to a broader market of tenants. And so those are the two requests that are before you this evening.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Rob Cushman. I live 1445 Anderson Road in Hendersonville. We purchased this property, I believe it was in 2017, and we had a, an owner-occupant user who had ended up selling the business but staying on as a manager and kept the building. The building was built for his business, a manufacturing business over the course of years. He added roofs to alleyways and connected buildings together and it wasn't really a great high-ceilinged warehouse space. It was very specifically manufacturing for his plastics business. They had workshop space and some storage space, but assembly spaces and break rooms and different things like that. So that tenant moved out in May of this past year. So we just cleaned up the building and are looking to multi-tenant the space because we could not find a single user for the 34,000 square feet of space. So there were already demising walls, there was already, think of a strip center-type space. There were pretty easily seven or eight demizable spaces with fire ratings and all the different things that we needed. So we went ahead and broke up the spaces and we had multiple tenants teed up that mostly fall in line with the industrial use. We have a, a small warehouse user, we have a, a jujitsu studio who we had to go for a conditional use, which was approved. But what we've, those all fall within the, the current use. What we have had is we've had users cosmetology-type uses, hairdressers, stylists, nails, those types of things who have had some interest in some of the smaller spaces, but they're not users that we can lease to down there. So the challenge is a lot of those people start working out of their houses and in order to move to some of our Class A retail that we have quite a bit of in Hendersonville, they don't have space they can go to for that $12, $14 foot type where it gets them out of the house and allows them to step up. And this would allow for that. So we're, we're not really having, we're not really requesting a use that would be, I guess, out of character. We're not looking to put a restaurant, we're not looking to put a lot of the general commercial uses that Sydney and I, we went, we went through and it was really, it's kind of like right there as to whether, you know, we move forward with the general commercial use. But some of those, some of those users did tip us over looking for that general commercial use. On the map, Maple, this is right behind KFC. If you go behind the KFC on West Main, Maple on both sides is general commercial. The big storage facility that got hit by the tornado, as did we. We just finished putting about $400,000 in this building. Now the roof is across the railroad tracks, which is great, but it is what it is. So we're working to get it back the way that it needs to be. But all of Maple, right there, all the way on the far right of that is general commercial as is part of our parking lot. I think the only thing that, that's not is there's a, like a doggy daycare place next to us that separates us from general commercial. So I'll stop rambling. My request is to go ahead and, you know, make that change from the industrial use to the general commercial use.
Questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Evans?
I will be abstaining. I'm an affected property owner.
Thank you for that. Other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hardwick?
So we're, you want to change part of this to community retail?
That, so that's, I went to planning and talked to them at length about mainly the zoning, the general commercial, the users that I'm looking for. As far as the districts, I don't necessarily have the understanding of how all that works and kind of the overlays and the planning areas, those types of things which we talked about. It's like, I'm not 100% sure because we are in a transition. You know, you all are talking, I think we've got the, some part of the, the map laid out, but maybe not the verbiage is all approved. So it's kind of a weird time right now. So my bottom line is looking for that general commercial use. The users is really my end game, is trying to get the users, the type of users that come with general commercial. That's really my, my goal. I'm not 100% on if we need to modify the district map. I know that that just kind of got solidified, so the ask is a big one.
So before you leave tonight, if you'll leave me your business card, I had someone call today that would be a great prospect for you.
Sure.
That I'll be happy to send along.
Understand.
My concern is if we change it, and, and I may be totally misunderstanding, but if we change it to community retail, is that not going to put all of the existing industrial uses that are down there?
I can speak to that. I got that if you want. You can too. Okay. So absolutely.
Well, because you, you just said you didn't understand it, but you're going to tell me.
The, the, yes, the Dockside District part, what I talked to Sydney about, I got a little bit, when I was down there, I got a little frustrated because I'm like, I don't care about all that. All I care about is going from this user type of industrial use over to the general commercial use that, that allows me to have more tenants that I feel like I can serve better people who we can go ahead and get in there for a little bit less expensive and, and open us up a little bit to more users. But the, say for example, the warehouse use in, in general commercial, and is that basically where we're going, you can be up to 10,000 square feet with a conditional use. So the warehouse user I've got is a 2,600 square foot user. Those users, I, I have a light manufacturing user that they make cabinets. They're in a, about a 5,000 square foot space. Their users right now, we're looking to, well, I would have had my use and occupancies, but now we have some issues we're taking care of. Those are, they're allowed in my, my current use and they're also conditional uses within general commercial based on size. And all of them fall under the footprint, under the size footprint that, you know, I feel I could go and make a good case for them being allowed as a conditional use. They are conditional. I don't have any spaces that are large enough, warehouse spaces above 10,000 square feet, those types of things that would preclude me from putting those users I have now back in there again, even if we were to change it to general commercial.
So I'm going to go back to Sydney and thank you for the comment.
Sure.
If someone wants to go in there who wants 2,000, 2,500 square feet of warehouse space, if we're saying this is community retail, that's not going to fit.
That, that's correct. They could do, the general commercial zoning allows them to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to make that request to have that up to 10,000 square feet for that warehouse use.
So the person that I want to refer to him is a flooring company who needs a place to store carpets and flooring materials and, and he works out of his house, but he needs a small warehouse space. So he would have to go to, if we approved this tonight, he would have to go to the BZA to get, to use to go in here to do what he's trying to lease. I don't see what we're, I don't know that we're going to help you by changing this.
That could also fall under contract office and storage charge, which would be permitted in the general commercial zoning district. Does that make sense?
I'm confused.
I know.
That's how I got buried.
This is a fun one to chew on.
I mean, I understand you would like to have some different uses in there, but I think what you're asking for with us changing this to a retail use is going to make it worse on you than it is helping you. It may get you one or two people, but the people that you really want are not going to be able to go in. Or at least that's the way I'm reading this and I'm understanding it.
They are conditional. I hear you. And they're conditionally approved to go in, that those warehouse users and those light commercial users, my understanding, they are, they are conditionally permitted. So I have to go to BZA and ask and make my case and within reason. I've not had those disapproved within reason when there's not something that's outside the realm. Now, these users that are going in there, I believe will transition over time. I believe we're going to get more towards those general commercial users, but I have struggled with this myself and-
Has the Board of Zoning Appeals turned you down if you had, wanted a hair salon in there? Or are you just not taking it to them?
There's no conditional use that allows me to go ask them. They're, they're not allowed, if my understanding.
Yeah, that's right. So commercial, commercial, this is industrial property, so they're really commercial uses like that aren't allowed even with a conditional use permit. And, and Sydney has worked with the applicant here for quite a bit over this and I know he struggled with what, what exactly to do on it. Because I think where, where you're at with it is there's things you would like and then you need this rezoning to do it, but that's going to, and we've made it, we've made it clear to the applicant, that's going to negate some things that could come up later, you know, that aren't conditional use permits and a commercial that are more industrial. that aren't conditional use permits in the commercial, that are more industrial type uses, that you're gonna maybe wish, oh, gosh, I wish I would have kept it, you know, zoned industrial. And it's, and, and, and so the applicant also understands coming back to undo this at a later date in coming years might not be possible. This, this, this reach of changing it from this industrial to commercial is really kind of a, a down zoning in effect. But to then later change it back, you know, he'd be asking for a more intensive use than commercial in doing that. So.
I want to help you be able to find tenants and to help promote business. I think that's part of what we do here as a planning commission. I just don't want to see it changed from an industrial to a retail zoning. That's an industrial area and we have very little of it in this city.
And absolutely, we.
And, and I, I, I feel your pain. But I don't want to change this zoning because we're so, we need an industrial zoning and changing a piece of it, I don't think is good in our long term. And again, and I say that with all due respect to what, I hear what you're saying.
Yep. And I, fair. We have had this discussion, Keith and I, Sydney and I, I've come to, we have all round tabled around this very question. This is not an industrial building. This is an industrial zoned area that's two acres. This building is not an.
Well, I'm familiar with the building. See, I, I drive that area about once a quarter.
Yep.
And I, I, I hear what you're saying. It's just, that's gonna be a tough vote for me because of, it's really, it's an industrial area. And again, I feel for you.
Sure.
I, I, I want to help every, any way that we can.
Yep. You just feel like it may not be of help.
I, 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 I think in the long run, we may not be helping. We may be hurting over what could be a, a small, short-term lease for you. Because most of those folks that are in, that want that, they're gonna sign a one-year lease. They can't pay a lot of money in rent because if they could, they'd go to Class A D space.
Sure.
And, but, and I understand all money is, you need, you need a paying tenant. I get that.
We've had a lot of demand. So it's not, it's, you know, it's, the reason that we were looking at these very, and I'll be very brief. We had, there's one section of the building that's about four thousand square feet of space. That's offices and kind of chopped up space. And it would be perfect for some of these types of users. Some of that has changed over the past month with the ninth having ripped the roof off the building. That's right. So we're working through all of those right now. It's kind of, everything is, is really a, a bit up in the air. I mean, I guess one option for me, I just don't know if it would work, is to defer it for a month. But I don't want to ask you guys to come back and actually have a conversation with you about, about all that. Because, I mean, I was, I have been on the fence and we are, some, some of that comes when you have a specific user. You get a little bit, you know, pull your heartstrings, heartstrings a little bit of, of, of different users. But I have had multiple users. It's not been just one specific user. It's like, hey, if, if, if we had that type of use, then we could go ahead and, and help you. But right now I can't. So I'm, I'm probably fifty-five, forty-five on how much I desire it as well. So.
So I guess I'm gonna go back to, to Keith and Sydney. I understand over the next two years, three years, five years that he's got tenants in there and it's a nail salon or it's a cosmetology or something like that. But to take it back to an industrial zoning, if all of a sudden he's ready to tear this building down and do a project because you, you now have a, a true industrial user. This may or may not happen. I, I guess it would come back to if it's a good project, we would approve it.
Yeah, I mean.
If it's not a good project, we won't, but.
Yeah, it's, it's completely at the applicant's risk. You know, I would, I would advise him that, that, that if he did want to come back in the future to do that, uh, there's, there's no guarantee that you can flip that thing back. Uh, but because of where it's situated on the railroad track, it has industrial next to it. It is positioned, it is positioned where you could, you could flip it from commercial to industrial. And it, it would be reasonable, you know, to do so. Uh, but there's no guarantee that, uh, you know, that that can be flipped back if it can be undone at a later, at a later date.
Understood.
Uh, but if that's something, you know, you just expressed the possibility of deferral, I mean.
I'm not opposed at all to have more, I mean, frankly, up in the air is the wrong thing to say about a tornado. But everything is now not the way that it was when we started. Um, and part of it, you know, is the, uh, the, the system and where we are currently and, and all the stuff. So I wouldn't be opposed to a month and have some conversation.
Question to you then.
Go ahead.
Do you have a tenant that you're going to lose if we were to turn this down tonight? Or if you were to defer it?
That is still in question because one of the tenants, one of the tenants who was in there is now looking for other space because she can't necessarily do her, but she's, she has a business that operates. So she's looking.
And she's out of zoning compliance?
No, if she finds one, uh, she'll be in a new space and then this, you, it's, so the answer is I'm not sure. But at this point, I don't want to say it's irrelevant, but I want to make the best decision for, you know.
For your prop, for the property and for your business.
For us selfishly. So that's, and, you know.
I, I hear exactly what you're saying. Um, if you're not in danger of losing a tenant in the next thirty days, my recommendation would be defer it. And especially with the tornado and all that's going on, just see. But if you want the change, I, I'm willing to vote for it.
Sure.
I just feel really, really uncomfortable.
Understand. I appreciate that.
The, the reasons that I've expressed.
Why don't we, can I request the deferral for thirty days? I'll have some conversations and by then we'll, we'll have a little bit more info. And I'll be very brief the next time I stand up here for you. Does that work?
Yeah.
That's my request. We could request for thirty days.
Actually, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make a motion that we defer this for thirty days. Uh, but with that reopen the public hearing that I closed earlier on this. So planning does not have to send out more notice, all that sort of thing on that. So that will be the motion on that. Um, and can I get a second on that? Is that Commissioner Martin? Okay. We have a second commissioner from Commissioner Martin. And then let's move to an electronic vote on that, if we could, please. And for clarity's sake, that Director Free, that will defer both the.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that, that will defer both the future land use amendment and the rezoning request as well.
Caitlin, will you read the score?
Seven ayes, one abstain, zero nays. Motion passes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is site plan for Center Point Liquor wall mural. Grant, I believe this is yours. And do we have representative for the property owner? Yes, we did.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is a little bit of change of pace in the applications here. Uh, it's a wall mural with, for Center Point Liquors. And so it's, it's a little bit different than what we've been looking at. But, uh, one of the, the things is, uh, this is a wall mural. Uh, the, the applicant has, has, uh, there's, there's questions in the zoning ordinance that, that go along with the application for this that basically, uh, the planning commission is to consider. And that's on the page three of the, the report. And basically it's the design standards for these that, that's to be considered. And the applicant actually went through and, and answered it per, per, per their criteria and, and went through everything there. But this is a, this is a mural that would be on the west side of the wall. And, and there's a picture, a street view picture there on the second page of the report. And it would face the west side. And that's the, the side of, uh, coming into Hendersonville along Main Street. Uh, that is where the new car dealership will be on, on that side. And the picture of the, the mural here, uh, if you guys see it here, this is, this is what they provided, uh, an actual, like, uh, uh, painting here. And should, uh, should be, should be a pretty interesting thing there, there on the, the wall there that, that's proposed. So, uh, uh, it looks like it's gonna be a, a segment that's ten foot by thirty-six and a half feet, um, which not, would not take up the entirety of that, that wall, uh, just a portion of it. And, um, we're just going through the, the questions there. Uh, I would just say on this, this consideration, if, if it were to be, uh, were to be denied, just look at these design standards and, and use that as the criteria for, for denial. Uh, it, it also can be used for approval as well. But, uh, but just want to make sure that, that if it were denied, that that's, uh, it's based on the zoning ordinance requirements.
Thank you, Grant. Would you like to introduce yourself and got anything to add?
My name is Linda Shaw. I'm the owner of Center Point Liquors. It's been a family business since nineteen seventy-six. And I would like to have this point of interest on, on the side of the building. Of course, the car dealership may end up building a lot of, or planting a lot of trees and it may not matter anyway. So, but I would hope that we could add kind of a point of interest with a little bit of artistic flair when you come into the city and you can look over there and see something nice and pleasant. It's basically gonna be colors that go with the building, uh, uh, colors of wheat and grain and colors of barrels. So, uh, that's kind of the gist of where we're going with that. Kind of indigenous maybe to the industry of what we do, which is sell liquor and wine. So.
Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First of all, thank you for being a longtime business owner in Hendersonville. Really appreciate that and your support of the community. Um, frankly, I think the mural complements the building. Um, and I think it's gonna be a great addition. So I'd like to make a motion to approve with all staff comments. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Silkwood and a second from Commissioner Martin. Um, we'll move to an electronic vote on that.
Eight ayes, zero abstentions, zero noes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And if it doesn't look great, I'll paint it all back plain.
Next up on our agenda, item is item eleven, election of officers. We don't have anything. Do we need to have staff conduct this? How do we want to approach this? Okay, go ahead, Director Free.
Okay, it is that time again for us to reconsider, uh, the, uh, election of officers for the planning commission. Uh, the, uh, the current slate of planning commission officers are Jeff Coker as chairman, uh, Tim Altizer as vice chairman, Vanessa Silkwood as secretary. And I think that's, is that it, Caitlin? And, and, uh, yes, and Charles Hasty as the vice secretary. That's correct. And so those are the current slate of officers. And I'll, uh, we'll entertain a motion for anyone that wants, uh, to nominate someone for a position or if you want to nominate a block of, of, of commissioners to fill those positions. And we'll just open it up, uh, to anyone that, uh, that wanted to, uh, to make a motion as a group or individually.
Commissioner Hardwood?
Unless someone feels differently, I would like to make a motion to accept the block of people that has been presented and the names that are currently there.
Second.
Any, any other discussion? Or anybody else wants to throw anybody else's name in there?
Can we make?
Under the bus.
Can we make Commissioner Slattery the chairman?
Okay, we, we have, we have a motion and a second, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, to, uh, to, to keep the officers the same as they, as they currently are. Uh, all those in favor, I think, can we do it? Voice is okay? Or do we, yeah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Then those will be the, the officers, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Director Free. Congratulations, everybody. I think we should elect Commissioner Slattery abstentia to something to surprise her, but that's.
We'll tell her that.
Okay, yes. Next up on the agenda is item twelve, staff level projects approved. Um, Director Free, I'll let you kind of take over from here and kind of guide us.
Uh, staff level projects approved, Durham Farms Final Platte, Indian Lake Center FDP Amendment. Uh, William Ferguson, Section Three off of Rockland Road, Final Platte. Uh, those were the three projects that have been approved at a staff level. Uh, the following projects, uh, you can see on pending projects. Uh, we have Bluegrass Landing Final Platte, Broken Paddle Outfitters, Outfitters. Fill this out in a field. Outfitters, Outbuilding, Site Plan, Glen Oak Dumpster Enclosure. Couple more. Rancho Cantina, exterior color change, uh, and a couple of Verizon Small Cells. Uh, one on North Anderson and one on Indian Lake Boulevard. I can entertain any questions about any of those projects anyone might have?
Where exactly were Broken Paddle Outfitters, Outfitters, Outbuilding?
Uh, I think that's still being worked on. It's right up here at Memorial, Memorial Park, uh, right here by the lake. Uh, and it's, it's pretty far off from the parking lot. Where you feed the ducks and you're facing the lake, it would be far to the left, uh, down there. That's, that's the, that was the original location. They were looking at some variations on that location uh, due to the cost of extending utilities to that. But this, thank you so much. This image that's, uh, that's up there shows, uh, kind of where his pointer is. That's the general location of where that's gonna be, uh, gonna be located.
I'll ask what's going on at Bluegrass Landing. That's the first one on.
Five twenty East Main.
I can, that, that's a, um, uh, all that commercial property that is to the left, or the west of Dollar General, it's all one lot now. They're subdividing off the corner lot for a potential future, uh, commercial outlaw.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
And that, and that is that most likely over the next several months, uh, there'll be, uh, site plans that'll be coming before the planning commission for, for projects here.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, in, in line with the, the currently approved plan development on the property and the uses.
Well, I'll let you jump into planning director comments, then item ten on our agenda.
Yes, one of the things we do every January, and I'll keep this brief. Uh, we just do a quick year-end report of kind of the things that we touch in the planning department and kind of evaluate where we stand in relationship to the activities that have occurred in twenty twenty-three compared to previous years. And everybody can kind of see the little report that we have and, and it has a graph in your staff report. I'll just kind of go over this just quickly. Uh, the number of preliminary plats were eight, final plats were twenty-two. Uh, PDP and, and PD, uh, PDP and PDP amendments were zero. Uh, FDP and FD amendments were six, combined development plans were two, site plans were sixty-three, and rezonings were one. So if it seems like, uh, the planning commission was very busy in twenty twenty-three, it statistically definitely was. Uh, the previous year in twenty twenty-two, uh, we did have a record, a record year of the number of things and, and items. Uh, so it is a, this twenty twenty-three is a six and a half percent decrease from the number of things that, uh, that we touched in, uh, in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty-two. But one of the things, uh, and forty of those things came before the planning commission for approval. And sixty-one of those things were approved at the, uh, at the staff level for a total of a hundred and, hundred and one items. One of the things I thought was really interesting is by far than the, in twenty twenty-three, the number of site plans that were approved were more than any previous year going back all the way to two thousand and six. to 2006. So there's a lot of activity with site plans that were, uh, that were approved, uh, this, this year. One, one other thing that I might just mention, it's just some information I wanna share. It's information about, you know, how many new businesses that we had, uh, in Hendersonville, uh, in 2023, and it was quite, it's quite a few, quite a few businesses, and it may be a little bit more than what a lot of folks might, might even think, is the total number of new businesses in Hendersonville in 2023 were 109, and it's a variation of a lot of different, a lot of different businesses, and that does not, that does not include, uh, we had about 18, uh, relocations. So there were 18 businesses that moved from one, one part of town or one building, and maybe mo- most of them moved in a larger building. We also had, uh, several, uh, things that aren't even in these numbers, uh, that, uh, that we had businesses that expanded at their existing location, uh, and maybe had additions or expanded into, into an adjacent, adjacent area. Also with this, uh, we had a total of, of 13 new, uh, restaurants in the city as well. Uh, rail restaurants or eating establishments, Rooster's Ice Cream is one of, is one of those, so, uh, different places that you can eat, there was about 13 of those. So that, that activity, uh, went on in 20, in 2023, and I just wanted to, to share that. Uh, looking, looking forward, uh, you know, we've looked at 2023, looking forward in 2024, I, I think we're going to continue to have a, a robust number of applications, uh, that are gonna be moving forward in a, in a wide variety of things, uh, that the, that are gonna come before the planning commission, uh, here over the next, uh, next several months. Our, uh, pre-development meetings, where we have meetings with, uh, with, uh, developers and applicants, uh, those have not, uh, they're, they have not subsided. Uh, we're continuing to have a lot of, a lot of those meetings, and then eventually those meetings lead to submissions, and then the submissions eventually come, uh, come to the, uh, come to the planning commission. Uh, but I think, uh, 2024 is gonna be, uh, there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for the planning commission, uh, to impact the future of our community, uh, and, uh, with your decisions, and, um, I can answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, that, that anybody may have. Uh, one other thing I do wanna, do wanna share, uh, we have Sloan Moore down here on the ending, on the end, uh, hello Sloan. Uh, she is our new planning technician, and is it three or four months that you, four? So Sloan, time flies by in the planning department, and she has been here four months, she's doing a great job, and, uh, she's taking on more and more responsibility. She's here this evening because, uh, she's the backup for Caitlin, uh, to do the secretarial work at the meetings, and, uh, so we appreciate her spending time away from her family this evening, uh, to, uh, to, um, to kinda share what goes on and, and the different duties that she will have. There'll be different times that she will be, uh, taking Caitlin's role, uh, here at, uh, at the meeting, uh, throughout the year, so we appreciate Sloan and, and everything that she's done. Thank you. Okay, and that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just wanted to thank the planning staff and planning director for all your hard work. I know I'm in the office quite a bit as secretary, and, um, I see you all, you know, meeting with applicants and just answering random questions from folks all the time, really working hard, and your attention to detail really does not go unnoticed in the staff reports and just day-to-day interactions you have with folks. I wanted to relay my appreciation for that, and also, um, appreciation that a lot of what Director Free, um, noted in his, in his remarks is that, you know, a lot of things that used to come before the planning commission are now being approved at the staff level, and I think that is very helpful because it really streamlines our processes up here, and really only the things that are necessary for planning commission approval, um, come before us, and I think that makes it for a much more streamlined process, just to say that. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions, comments from commissioners?
Hearing none, I'll ditto what Commissioner Silkwood said, and I'll also entertain a motion to adjourn as well. Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Longmire and a second from Commissioner Altizer. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Thank y'all. Win it.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah.